All right, good evening and welcome. This is the planning and zoning meeting for the city of Smyrna. Today's Monday, August 13th at 6:00 PM and this meeting's called to order. At this time, we'd like to ask that all electronic devices be turned off if they interfere with our recording equipment. For those of you joining us for the first time, this meeting's conducted much like a council meeting. As such, each application will include a presentation from city staff followed by a question and answer session between staff and the board. Following staff's presentation, we'll have the applicant present their case and answer any questions. Once all the questions have been satisfied, we'll have an opportunity for anyone in attendance that would like to come forward and speak in favor of or opposition to the application. We do ask that you address the board, not the applicant, and state your name and address for the record. Do we have a sign-in sheet at the podium? Okay, we do have a sign-in sheet at the podium and the only thing we really need there is your name and address. All right. The first item on the agenda is 2018-300. This is zoning request Z18-013. This item will be withdrawn at the request of the applicant, so if we could get a motion to remove this. We have a motion, Mr. Monroe. We have a second, Ms. Lightfoot. Please vote. Denny. Thank you, Denny. All right, this is approved 6-0. All right, the next item on our agenda is 2018-346. This is zoning request Z18-015. This item is to be tabled to the September 10th, 2018 Planning and Zoning Board Meeting at the request of the applicant. Can we get a motion to table this item, please? A motion, Ms. Harrington. Second, Mr. Bartlet. All right, this item is tabled to the September 10th, 2018 meeting. All right, the next item on the agenda is 2018-298. This is zoning request Z18-014. This is rezoning from R-20 to RAD conditional for the construction of two single-family homes at a density of 3.84 units per acre. This is a .52 acre lot at landlot 341 and 381, also known as 3381 Old Concord Road. Angel Oak Homes is the applicant. Are they in attendance? Angel Oak? Okay. All right, well, we will move this one to the end of the agenda and come back to it. You gonna do that? All right. All right, the next item, we're gonna skip through that, we'll come back to Z18-014. Moving along to item D on our agenda, it is 2018-347. This is a public hearing. Code amendments to Section 402, 712, 714, 716, and 720 of the zoning ordinance. They're proposed to add definitions related to breweries and distilleries and to list breweries and distilleries as permitted uses within general commercial, light industrial, central business district, and mixed-use zoning districts. The city of Smyrna. Mr. Martin, the background, please.
These are proposed text amendments to the city zoning ordinance to deal with brewery uses and distillery uses within the city and specifically identifying what areas and parts of the city will be appropriate for these uses. You guys will hear it tonight. You'll make a recommendation to mayor and council. Mayor and council will hear these zoning amendments on September 17th and make a final decision at that time. Just a little background on this request. Staff has met with numerous brewers looking for opportunity to locate within the city of Smyrna limits. We've identified potential locations for them and tried to, you know, help them and assist them in, through the permitting and licensing process and obtaining these locations. However, our zoning ordinance at the moment is silent on breweries and distilleries. So basically, staff has to make an interpretation as to where these potential uses would be allowed to be located. Due to the number of requests that we're dealing with and just the industry as a whole is growing, staff feels that it's beneficial to go ahead and deal with the breweries and distilleries and try to make sure we clearly identify where they should be allowed and how they should be handled. Basically, we are proposing to amend Section 402, which provides definitions related to zoning uses. These definitions would deal with a barrel, brewer, brewery, brew pub, distilled spirits, distiller, distillery, and malt beverages. All those have defined definitions and some of them are concurrent with state law and how they define these terms. In addition, we would like to add the list of brewers and breweries and distilleries and brew pubs to Section 712, 714, 716, and 720. Those are the general commercial zoning district, the light industrial district, mixed use, and central business districts. Outside of these proposed text amendments, city staff is also gonna have to deal with providing amendments to the city's alcoholic beverage ordinance to deal with permitting and licensing for these facilities. Here's the proposed amendments that we are proposing for the definition section of the zoning ordinance. First one deals with definition of a barrel. Distilled spirits, that equals to 53 gallons, and for malt beverages, 31 gallons. Definition of brewer is basically the manufacturer of malt beverages. Brewery is an establishment where malt beverages are manufactured, with the exception of a brew pub because they have a separate definition. A brew pub is the next definition, and that's any eating establishment in which beer or malt beverages are manufactured or brewed subject to the barrel production limits established by state law. As used in this paragraph, the term eating establishment means an establishment which is licensed to sell distilled spirits, malt beverages, or wines, and which derives at least 50% of its total annual gross food and beverage sales from the sales of prepared meals or food. Provided however, when determining a local annual gross food and beverage sales, barrels of malt beverages sold to licensed wholesale dealers or to the public for consumption off premises shall not be used. 402 deals with distilled spirits, and that means any alcoholic beverage obtained by distillation or containing more than 24% alcohol by volume. The next term is distiller, and that's the manufacturer of distilled spirits. In the case of distilled spirits, manufacturer means any person engaged in distilling, rectifying, or blending any distilled spirits, provided however, that a venter that blends wine with distilled spirits to produce a fortified wine shall not be considered a manufacturer of distilled spirits. Distillery means any establishment where distilled spirits are manufactured. And the last term is malt beverage, which is defined as any alcoholic beverage obtained by the fermentation of any infused or decoration of barley, malt hops, or any other similar product of any combination of such products and water, containing not more than 14% alcohol by volume, and including ale, porter, brown, stout, lager beer, small beer, and strong beer. The term malt beverage does not include sake, known as a Japanese rice wine. The next set of amendments deal with adding the actual uses to the particular zoning districts. 712 deals with adding breweries and distilleries and brew pubs to the general commercial zoning And the manufacturing has to be conducted wholly within enclosed building. And then the second amendment deals with renumbering the section to be able to include the amendment above. Section 714 is being amended to add breweries, distilleries, and brew pubs to the light industrial zoning district. And along with that, the manufacturing needs to be conducted within a wholly enclosed building. 716 deals with adding the uses to the central business district, and it also requires manufacturing within an enclosed building. And 20 finally deals with a mixed-use building, or the mixed-use zoning category, and adding the uses to that category, as well as limiting the manufacturing to an enclosed building. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions for you.
Any questions for Mr. Martin? Questions? No. All right, thank you, sir. This is a public hearing. At this time, we'd like to ask if there's anyone in attendance that would like to come forward and speak in favor of or opposition to the code amendments to Sections 402, 712, 714, 716, and 720. Welcome, good evening.
Hi.
What's your name?
Jim Pearson.
Good evening, Mr. Pearson.
I'm at 460 Pineview Drive.
Okay.
Is it okay to ask a question of this?
Sure.
Well, first of all, I'm in support of this. I think this is great. But my question has to do with wineries, and under that would be cideries and meateries. And is that taken care of anywhere else? Or does that need to go under this also?
That's a good question. Mr. Martin?
We hadn't really gotten any requests for that, and we hadn't studied what the true process is and what state law deals with that, so we may be able to look into that.
Maybe at a later date, we'd end up adding that as another item. Right? Okay. That's a good question, Mr. Pearson. Anybody else? All right. Well, any other questions or discussion on item 2018-347? Okay. Mr. Campo.
Mr. Chairman, concerning code amendments 14, 716, and 720 of Smyrna's zoning ordinance, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve, Mr. Campo, with a second. Anyone? Mr. Monroe? All in favor of 2018-347? Please vote. Yay or nay? That item's approved 6-0. All right, the next item on the agenda is 2018-348. This is a general code amendment for corrections and updates for the zoning ordinance for the city of Smyrna. Caitlin, the background, please.
So, we're gonna go through a couple zoning text amendments, the first being the general code corrections and updates. So, as we went through the zoning ordinance, we found several typos, grammatical errors that we needed to address. So, we are going to be amending Sections 402, 501, 709, 712, 715, 717, 1013, 1201, and 1510 of the ordinance. So, we also, during this review, we also identified several terms that needed to be updated to reflect the current standards. So, there were several, I'm only gonna list a few, that way we don't take all night going through these. So, the first one goes to show some of the issues that we had with the grammar. So, this one, we're omitting a repeated phrase in Section 715, so you can see that there was just a grammatical error. The second one is a little bit more important. We changed the number of dwelling units that were allowed in single-family attached homes. So, it used to read not more than 10, we have changed it to 6. This does reflect our current standards of what we allow in attached units. Then, in Section 1201, we have gotten rid of the paragraph that zonings do expire. We do not currently uphold this, thus we are taking it out of the zoning code. So, like I said, there are several other ones. There was more grammatical errors and typing errors that we went through, but these are just a brief review. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Walsh?
Mr. Chairman, just one quick clarification on the, one that deals with the six dwelling units. That has to do with like a townhome project or an apartment, basically a townhome project where you can't have more than six units in a run. So, when we say a building, that's what we were talking about, it may have six units in it because they're townhomes. And so, that has been the practice for years and years, even before I got here, 11 and a half years ago. So, we're just bringing the ordinance up to date, but that's what that's referring to. It's not that you could have six units in a single-family home. It has to do with the multifamily nature, and you can't have more than six in one run before you have to then have another run.
Right.
Right. Section 801, the table that lists what the requirements are, establishes that six units per building is the max number. This is just clarifying within the code section or the use provisions that it is six units, and we don't have an error in one part that contradicts another.
Very good. Any other questions? Thank you, Caitlin. Okay, this is a public hearing. At this time, we'd like to ask if there's anyone that would like to come forward and speak in favor of or opposition to item 2018-348. Public hearing for general code amendments for corrections and updates for zoning ordinance. Nope. Okay. Then, I'd like to ask for a motion.
General code amendments for correction and updates to zoning ordinance for the city of Smyrna, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve, Mr. Campo. Do we have a second? Mr. Monroe? Please vote. All right, items approved 6-0. All right, the next item on the agenda is 2018-350. This is a public hearing for the application for map amendments to updates to the zoning ordinance. Ms. Walsh?
Amending the applications for map amendments, which is Section 1502 of the zoning ordinance. So, a few documents and requirements that are currently listed on the rezoning, zoning amendment, and special land use permit applications are not currently reflected in zoning ordinance, so we're trying to rectify that. And then, due to infill redevelopments and the tightness of many development sites, staff has been requesting additional information to provide thorough analysis and information during the zoning process, which have been added on applications over time, but once again, not in the ordinance, so we are trying to add those in now. So, here you can see a list of the additional requirements we're going to be adding. The first one is 1502.7. Any development that exceeds 100,000 net square feet or 75 dwelling units will be required to submit a traffic, water, sewer, and school impact statement. A development that has less than 100,000 net square feet or 75 dwelling units may be required to submit one or all of the above statements upon request. And the reason we are adding this one is so that we can provide this impact statement regarding water and sewer usage, to make sure that the, as well as traffic generation and school impact, is so that the city can make sure that we can allow this for the proposed impact on the development. The next one is 1502.8, a preliminary hydrology study for the proposed tract. And so, the reason that we do that, excuse me, is to verify that we have set aside enough area to accommodate the stormwater management facility. The next one's 1502.9, a water and sewer availability letter from the public works department or Cobb County Water System. We do this so that we make sure that we have the water and sewer available for the subject property and can support the development. 1502.10, a copy of the deed that reflects the current owners of the property. This is to make sure that we verify the property ownership. 1502.11, a copy of the paid tax receipts for the subject property or a signed statement by an official in the tax commissioner's office, and we do that to make sure that they are in good standing with the city and the county. 1502.12, a set of building elevations and floor plans, along with a description of exterior wall coverings and finishes to be used. This is so that we can have the building size and scale for comparison in the surrounding neighborhoods. And then, 1502.13, a tree protection plan in accordance with Section 10636 of the ordinance, and this is so that we can see the impact for the specimen trees and the development in general to the trees. And with that, I can answer any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Walsh? All right, thank you. All right, this is a public hearing. We'd like to ask if there's anyone that would like to come forward and speak in favor of or opposition to item 2018-350, application for map amendments to the zoning ordinance. Let the record reflect, there are no comments from the public. Motion? A motion, please.
Amendments update to the zoning ordinance for the city of Smyrna, I make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve, Mr. Campo. Do we have a second? Ms. Harrington? Please vote. All right, item 2018-350 is approved 6-0. Okay. The next item on our agenda is 2018-351. This is update to the zoning ordinance. Ms. Walsh?
All right, again, on to the next one. So, we are going to be amending the mixed-use district. So, this is Section 720 of the zoning ordinance. So, currently, the intent of the section is too narrow of a scope and really limits the mixed-use zoning districts to just specific areas of the city. So, when we did two different studies, the Spring Road LCI study, as well as the 2040 comprehensive plan, the regional activity center land use designation was added to accommodate the intensive development that's currently envisioned on Spring Road near Cobb Parkway. So, thus, the mixed-use district needs to be expanded to also include the regional activity center for the future land use designation. So, just like the general code amendments, while we were reviewing mixed-use, there were a few typos and grammatical errors that we wanted to rectify. So, currently, the mixed-use is only for the central business district, mixed-use or community activity center. Once again, we are adding regional activity center to the intent for mixed-use. So, the other two amendments that are below are both examples of the typos that we had. The first one, you'll see that instead of "and," we have put "an," and then we also got rid of "said," which is unnecessary. So, those will give you an idea of the typos that we found and have fixed. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Walsh? Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing. At this time, we'd like to ask if there's anyone in attendance that would like to come forward and speak in favor of or opposition to item 2018-351, public hearing for mixed-use district update to the zoning ordinance. Let the record reflect, there are none from the public. All right, can you get a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, concerning ordinance for the city of Smyrna, I make the motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve, Mr. Campo. Do we have a second? Mr. Bartlet? With a second, if we could please vote for item 2018-351. It is approved 6-0. Okay. The next item on our agenda is 2018-352. This is a public hearing for code amendment to the zoning residential zoning districts. Ms. Walsh? The background.
All right. So, we are proposing to add R-8 and R-10 as zoning districts. This would be adding Section 703A and 703B to the zoning ordinance. Currently, there's not a residential, single-family zoning district that addresses development between 3.4 and 6 acres. So, the R-10 would be up to four units per acre, and the R-8 would be up to five units per acre, so it would fit that slot perfectly. And the new districts will reduce the need for variances and create more uniform development. That way, you're not approving a huge list, it'll just be straightforward and make the process a little bit easier for everybody. The proposed changes in the single-family residential zoning districts may also provide an opportunity to address housing affordability here in the city. So, Section 703 will add 703B, which is for the single-family residential districts. It will promote the development of affordable, single-family, owner-occupied detached dwelling units at a medium density. And then, R-8 will be the development of affordable, single-family, owner-occupied detached dwelling units at a medium-high density. And with that, I can answer any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Walsh? All right, thank you. This is a public hearing. We'd like to ask if there's anyone in attendance that would like to come forward and speak in favor of or opposition to item 2018-352 for changes to code amendment to the zoning ordinance to add new, single-family residential zoning districts. And let the record show, there are no public comments on this item. All right, Mr. Campo?
...to the zoning ordinance to add new, single-family residential zoning districts in the city of Smyrna, I make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve, Mr. Campo. A second? Ms. Harrington? Item 2018-352 is approved 6-0. All right, the next item on our agenda is 2018-353. This is a public hearing for Section 704, R- ordinance, the city of Smyrna. Ms. Walsh? ordinance, the City of Smyrna, Ms. Walsh?
All right, so we are going to be amending the RAD district. This includes amending Section 704, 705, 707, 718, 905, and 1001 of the zoning ordinance. So RAD has, the zoning district, has become the city's catch-all zoning district for single-family residential development, since currently there's not a district that has the densities between 3.4 and 6 units per acre. With this, the acronym RAD, the district seems to focus more on the attached aspect of the zoning more prominently. By switching the A and the D, it would be switching the perceived importance of the designations, so essentially, we're rebranding the RAD. Once again, while we were reviewing this, we fixed a couple of typing errors that occurred the first time around. So once again, we are amending the following sections, 704, 705, 707, 718, 905, and 1001. So I listed a few of them here. All we did for this is we put, instead of RAD, we switched it to RDA in each section. So anywhere in the ordinance that it says RAD, we're switching it to RDA. And with that, I can answer questions.
Any questions for Ms. Walsh? All right, this is a public hearing. At this time, we'd like to ask if there's anyone in attendance that would like to come forward and speak in favor of or opposition to Item 2018-353 for updates to the Section 704 of the RAD district. Let the record show, there's no public comment. All right, with that, I'd like to ask for a motion.
704 RAD update to the zoning ordinance for the City of Smyrna, I make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve, Mr. Campo, do we have a second? Mr. Bartlet? Please vote, Item 2018-353. She probably doesn't know the party's about to start. All right, that item's approved 6-0. All right, the next item on the- is a public hearing for zoning ordinance table updates. Ms. Walsh?
All right, thanks for your patience, this is the last one. So we are going to be updating the table revisions. So these are going to be amending Section 601, 801, and 802 of the zoning ordinance. So what we're doing is revising several of the tables. These are with, in conjunction with the last two, so the RAD renaming and the R10 and R8 amendments. And additionally, along with those, when the ordinance was updated previously in 2006 for the mixed-use zoning district, the mixed-use was not put into the use provisions. So we, or excuse me, it was omitted from the tables for the district designations. So we are now putting that in, and once again, we are fixing a typing error. So the first one is Section 601. So we are adding the R8 and R10, as well as switching RDA and adding the mixed-use. These are for the district designations. We are now amending Section 801. These are adding in all of the setback requirements for R10, R8, and we are also separating out RDA, single-family detached and attached. It makes it a little bit easier to read for the public as well as internally. And then we are also switching how it's read for the TD, minimum side yards and rear yards. Then finally, we have Section 802. We are fixing a small typo, as you can see, for maximum lot coverage by buildings and other structures, including paving. It said 0 percent, we have fixed it to say 100. It was currently being done at 100, we just had to fix it for the ordinance. And with that, I can answer any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Walsh? Well done. This is a public hearing. If there's anyone in attendance that would like to come forward and speak in favor of or opposition to Item 2018-354, now would be that time. And again, no public comment on Item 2018-354. So with that, Mr. Campo?
Mr. Chairman, concerning zoning ordinance table updates for the City of Smyrna, I make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve, Mr. Campo, do we have a second? Ms. Lightfoot? Vote nay. All right, this item's been approved 6-0. Now, somebody want to get some ice for Mr. Campo over there, he's been overworked here. All right, we're going to jump back up the agenda to Item 2018-298, Angel Oak Homes, are they in attendance? Okay. All right, so this- 014, rezoning from R20 to RAD conditional for the construction of two single-family homes at a density of 3.84 units per acre. This is .52 acres in landlots 341 and 381, also known as 3381 Old Concord Road. Mr. Martin, the background, please.
Yes, this request was previously tabled by y'all at the last meeting to this meeting to allow the applicant time to address some of staff's concerns with regards to their site design. They have worked through those issues and have submitted a new site plan, so we've been able to move this request forward so y'all can act on it tonight, make a recommendation to mayor and council, and then mayor and council can make a final decision on September 17th. Subject property is 3180 Old Concord Road. This is at the northeast corner of the intersection of Concord Road and Old Concord Road. If y'all remember, we just annexed and rezoned the property across Old Concord Road for 15 single-family homes that would front on Old Concord. This site is approximately half an acre in size. It would, it abuts the Concord Lake, or Concord Lake Village subdivision to the north. And that property is zone RAD. The property we just annexed and rezoned across Old Concord is zoned RAD. The property adjoining to the east is R20, and the properties across Concord are R15 and limited commercial. The applicant is requesting to rezone the subject property from R20 to RAD conditional. The future land use designation for the property is currently Neighborhood Activity Center. With this proposal, they're requesting to change that to moderate-density residential, which is up to 4.5 units per acre, which would bring it in line with the Concord Lake subdivision to the north and to the new subdivision that was just annexed and rezoned to the west across Old Concord Road. The properties to, the property to the east and to the south have a future land use designation of Community Activity Center. With this request, it's a little bit different than the way we normally handle things. The applicant has provided two options with regards to site design, and I'll go and explain both these, both options for you, so you understand what's going on. The first option is to front the homes on Old Concord Road and to have, to have the access to the rear entry garages off the shared drive from Concord Lake Village. And I'll highlight that here in a second. With this request, they are proposing setbacks that are similar to Concord Lake Village with a front setback of 25 feet, an exterior street side of 25 feet, an interior side setback of 5 feet, and a rear setback of 25. This is the connection that I was talking about and highlighting where they, how they would get access to their shared driveway and rear entry garages. This is the location of the proposed detention facilities. On their, on the next plan, you'll see exactly what those facilities look like. And with this request, there are five variances. The first deals with lot size reduction from 15,000 square feet down to 7,700. Next is a lot width reduction from 100 feet down to 52. The next one is a front setback reduction from 35 feet down to 25 feet. The next one is an interior side setback reduction from 10 feet down to 5. And the last one is a rear setback reduction from 30 feet down to 25 feet. We just went through all the proposed zoning amendments and stuff like that to deal with this exact issue with these variances. And hopefully, your recommendation for approval, and if it subsequently gets adopted by mayor and council, we'll address this and these types of variances will ultimately go away. Staff is supportive of all the requested variances. They're similar in nature to Concord Lake Village and to the enclave at Old Concord Road, which is the property across Old Concord Road. This is option B, if the owners or the applicant's not able to obtain access to the shared drive from Concord Lake Village. Obviously, they're proposing to have a drive off of Old Concord Road that would go in between the homes and access the rear entry garages at the back of the property. This request, or this option would change the home dimension from 40 by 65 feet to 36 by 65 for one of the lots. He's still proposing the same setbacks for both options. And this is just showing an 18-foot shared drive access off Old Concord. We're requesting an 18-foot wide drive, so you can have a two-way drive at the entrance, so we're not having a situation where a car's trying to get out and make a left onto Old Concord Road, and then the next homeowner's trying to make a right and blocking traffic on Old Concord. And these are the locations of the proposed stormwater detention facilities. The setbacks didn't change, the lot layouts didn't change, so all the requested variances remain the same across both, across both options. Here are the proposed building elevations and the architectural style he's proposing for the site. Here's the subject property. And then surrounding properties to give you context of what's, what's going on in the area. Community Development recommends approval of the rezoning from R20 to RAD conditional for two single-family homes at a density of 3.84 units per acre with the standard conditions from Section 1201, minus conditions 2, 3, 4, 8, 9, 10, 11, and 17. Those deal with larger subdivisions that require decal lanes, streetlights, and, and open space and, and other factors. In addition to standard conditions, we are proposing some special conditions. Number 10 deals with the setbacks I laid out earlier. 11 ties the minimum lot size to 10,000 square feet. 12 ties the minimum lot width to 50 feet. 13 requires the home to have a minimum floor area of 1,800 square feet. 14 requires the developer to be responsible for any water and sewer improvements. 15 is the requirement for the 18-foot shared driveway off of Old Concord. 16 deals with tree protection during the development process. 17 ties the approval of the zoning to the site plans submitted, and both are listed there, so they'll have that option either way. And then 18 deals with the elevation submitted and ties the zoning to that elevation. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Martin?
Is the corner lot setback affecting this?
The, the city's code states the corner lot is, the setback on the street side is two-thirds, the front setback. He is proposing a 25-foot front setback on both the front and the street side, so he's matching it on both of them.
Any other questions for Mr. Martin? All right, at this time, we'd like to ask for the applicant to come forward and tell us a little bit about your plan. Good evening and welcome.
Hey, good evening. Apologize for being tardy this evening, and I'm glad we're able to fit this in towards the end. My name is Bob Harris, I live at 4511 Glen Point Way, Smyrna, Georgia. Angel Oak Homes is a small building company that specializes in small urban infill lots. We have, we've done several new homes in the Smyrna market. We, this, this particular site plan, we, we put it under contract, subject to getting two lots. We've met with the, with the people over at Concord Lake Village, they're very much in favor of it. They have offered and we have accepted, subject to ironing out a lot of legal technicalities for the secondary access into Concord Lake Village. The homes will be very similar to Concord Lake Village homes that are there. I believe it'll be an asset to, to that particular community, along with the community that you approved a few months back. The homes themselves will probably be in the 300 to 3,500 square foot range. The current home is, was built in the late 1950s, it's currently a rental house, or has been a rental house, right now it is vacant. And I think it will be an asset to the City of Smyrna. If anybody has any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Any, any questions for the applicant? All right, thank you very much. At this time, we would like to ask if there's anyone in attendance that would like to come forward and speak in favor of or opposition to Item 2018-298 zoning request, Z18-014. And let the record reflect, there is no public comment on this item. Okay. All right, any further discussion? Okay. I'd like to ask for a motion for Item 2018-298.
I'd like to make a motion to approve, Item Number 2018-298, public hearing zoning request, Z18-014 rezoning from R20 to RAD conditional.
We have a motion, Ms. Harrington, to approve. We have a second, Ms. Lightfoot, do we, can we vote, please? We're not going to be able to say that anymore. All right, looks like your application has been approved. Good luck. This will be heard at mayor and council on September 17th, 2018. Good luck with your plan, Mr. Harris. All right. I know we've got the minutes, so before you start yelling at me, is there, is there any further comments, Mr. or discussion, Mr. etc.? No? Well, we'd like to recognize Ms. Walsh for an excellent job tonight, entertaining us. Well done for, on her presentation.
Kind of going to miss RAD.
Yeah, which is, which is why I laughed. All right, so in the absence of further discussion, we'd like to approve the minutes from the July 9th, 2018 Planning and Zoning Meeting, or the Board Members in Possession- Are the board members in possession of the minutes? Are there any changes that need to be made at this time? We got a motion to approve, Mr. Rice. Do we have a second? We have a second, Mr. Bartlet, our second hardest-working gentleman tonight. And please vote to approve the minutes. All right, the minutes have been approved 6-0. All right, thanks for joining us for this party tonight. The meeting is adjourned at 6:50 in the PM.